Everybody.
Thank you. Okay, welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council, September 10th, 2025, until after 6 o'clock. We're in the city council chambers, 345 High Street in Hamilton. We have one public hearing this evening regarding Dorana Hybrids expansion. Roll call, please.
Mueller, present.
Pullman, present.
Fear. Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Present.
Nab.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
We have quorum.
Motion to excuse Councilmember Fear for reasons known to the city council.
Self-moved.
Second.
Motion to make Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Nab. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We're going to start off in offering a prayer following the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are able. Almighty God, God has all in our daily decision-making, help us all to be active listeners. Specter our military and first responders, including our police, in our fire. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have no special presentations this evening. Proclamations or anything like that will go directly to the audience of citizens. Individuals who wish to speak at this council meeting may speak during this part of the agenda, or they may reserve the right to speak when the item is up for a vote on council floor. All individuals who intend to address city council are required to sign this blue public speaking book. Each speaker is allowed up to five minutes. First, we have Jim Long.
Good evening, Mayor of council.
Good evening.
I was talking to someone. You know, I was, let's see, this car, I've been parked before a lot of times, and somebody parked a parking sign, says, no parking here in the corner, but a front side where, you know, all night I get it. Why? They don't do it. Back in, two years ago, we couldn't do it at all. It's the city manager.
Well, Jim, we've actually addressed this issue, and I believe the police. Hold on a second. Hold on a second. I mean, I'll let, you know. Thank you for bringing the issue to us. You brought it to us before, and, you know, I think we're all sensitive to those who caused the possible line-of-sight issue. I know the police do ticket when they can. They're on calls for service as well. But again, you do raise an issue which we all have to be wary of, whether you're going through an intersection, we have to all be aware when we're driving of that, and we do hope that the police, you know, when they can, can actually ticket those vehicles that are too close to the intersection. So, thank you for raising the issue. You help us become really aware of that situation, and you help us all drive more safer by bringing that issue to our attention. Okay?
Okay. Back 10 years ago, you wouldn't find people parking there anymore.
Well, there's probably maybe more cars than even 10 years ago, so.
Well, I'm glad you have also, I mean, less people who care about the city, you know.
Hanging there with us as you continue to bring issues to our attention, okay, Jim?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I did speak with Jim. Jim, you said you would take pictures for us.
Okay, I sure did.
If you will, if you'll take a picture of those cars that are parked past the sign, we'd sure appreciate it. You can show us when you come, and we'll have the city clerk make note of that for us and stuff like that, but pictures speak a thousand words.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Get the license plate, too, Jim, okay? Get the license plate as well. All right?
Thank you.
Okay, there's a solution possibly to some of your questions. Aaron Ellis.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. I have recently become aware of an ordinance that affects me, but currently hasn't affected me, so I wanted to see about possibly getting addressed before it becomes possibly an issue. It's in regards to boats not being allowed to sit in your driveway or on a city street. As somebody who is retired, who fishes all the time, I fish roughly about nine months out of the year because the weather permits it, and the boat that I have is no bigger than a full-size heavy-duty pickup truck. So, I was wondering if there might be a possibility that we could look at allowing something as small as a full-size heavy-duty pickup truck to be able to sit, you know, in our driveway for somebody who fishes all the time, and it's no bigger than a full-size pickup, so I understand pleasure boats and pontoon boats being eyesores and stuff like that, but I figured if it falls under those parameters, maybe it wouldn't be maybe that big of an issue.
Interesting back situation. That's something that you raised, and maybe we can look into that and consider it, because it's kind of an interesting situation when the boat is not that big a boat, and you use it as much as you do, but we can't, I mean, you do raise a good issue, but it's a smaller one, that's a different issue than having the larger boats, and like you said, the pontoon boats. But I would hope everybody be as conscientious as you would be. So, it's a, you do raise an issue, an interesting issue.
Mayor.
Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Pullman.
What size boat are you talking about that you want to allow? I mean, I understand, you know, you've got different sized fishing boats. Are we talking a 16 to 20, or we're talking, I mean, what would you think would be allowable?
This one is a 19-foot aluminum. It's an Express X19. I've looked at the stats on HD pickup trucks, and the biggest full-size pickup truck's 22 feet long.
So, when you said it's a 19-foot aluminum, is that including the trailer tongue on it, too, or you're just talking the boat itself?
Just the boat itself with the trailer, it's probably about 21 and change, but it does have a swing-away tongue on it, which.
Oh, you got a swing-away?
Yeah, which would reduce it.
Okay, so that'll give us a little bit.
Yeah, it will fit in my garage. It's got shallow-water anchors on it, 10-foot power poles, and it's a little cumbersome having to lower those down because it won't go in the garage unless you lower those down to get them in there, and then, once you got it in there, then you can raise them back up. So, that's the main reason for trying to leave it set out during those, you know, nine months.
You don't let it sit out in the cold of the year storm and that?
Yeah, I'll put it, it'll be in the garage during those times, so.
How many, maybe?
I would say three months out of the year. I know a lot of towns will go from Memorial Day to Labor Day. I've seen that with a lot of places, so, but I know every place is different, you know, as far as that goes, so, but I know that fishing for me is about nine months out of the year. I'm not a, I'm more of a fair-weather fisherman. I'm not an ice fisherman, so.
I'm a former boat owner, so.
Gotcha.
I got what you mean, so, okay, I appreciate that.
Mr. Ellis.
Excuse me.
Mayor. Please.
Mr. Ellis, how do your neighbors feel about your boat in the driveway? Is everybody amicable, or?
Nobody said anything about it. I know that there's, you know, there's some people that's got vehicles that unfortunately, I know, I don't criticize people for what they own or what they drive, but some people, you know, have vehicles that probably should be in the junkyard, but, you know, I don't criticize for what people drive, so I didn't think it was fair to scrutinize a boat just because it didn't drive on land, and it drove on water versus what somebody else is driving. Some people don't keep up their yards the way that I would like manicured. I try to keep mine that way, but, you know, everybody's going to have what they like and don't like about their neighbors, and what they have to see and they don't want to see, so I don't think a decent-looking boat that's not a eyesore, that's not blocking someone's view, I mean, it's not even above my wife's car, the car is, so you can see the, her car over top of the boat because it's not that high.
Would you say your, would you say your boat's just maybe even shorter than like a four-door Dually pickup truck?
Yes, yeah.
They're pretty long.
Yeah, and it's no taller than the Hyundai Santa Fe that she owns, so, and I've taken pictures of it that I could submit to show the size of it and how reference it looks sitting in the driveway with.
Mr. Mayor. You're going to hear from our city manager, but thank you for raising the issue, and our city professionals for listening to you. Right now, please.
Our planning director, Lauren Nelson's here this evening, and I think maybe she could shed some light on the statute, and also maybe consider talking to the ordinance review commission as well, just to take a look at this, so. Thank you, sir. I want to meet you out in the lobby.
Aaron Fantoni. Come to podium, give us your name, please, address.
All right. Hello, I'm Erin Raquel Fantoni. I typically go by my middle name Raquel. I live at 741 Sanders Drive here in Hamilton. Thank you for, I'm bringing along some smaller citizens than I anticipated this evening, so please bear with me if I'm not as organized as I initially planned. Oh, Dad! All right, there goes one of them. Thank you. I'm here to, I realize this is perhaps slightly off-topic for today's meeting, so I appreciate your time. I'm here as I recently became aware of a proposed data center to be built on 1380 University Boulevard here in Hamilton. I appreciate that it's clear this city council's already been taking this conversation seriously. I really appreciate the frequently asked questions that were posted, but I do have some enduring concerns after reading the questions, so if it's all right, oh, I know I have five minutes, I don't think I'll use all of it. I'll speak a little bit about where my concerns come from, and then I'll have a few questions. My, one of my primary concerns is that with data centers, often we've seen in other communities that they're promising jobs, is that their big promise to the community is, you let us come, and yes, this is resource-intensive, but the trade-off is we're going to help the people who live here by offering them good, stable, long-term, high-paying jobs. However, when we look at other towns where this has happened, where especially where they put in hyperscale centers like this, that's just not how it's gone. I have a quote here from Forbes on an article about tax breaks for data centers bring few jobs, where they share that data centers, while essential to the modern economy, do not serve as permanent and ongoing job creation engines, any more than the construction of a highway or a bridge does. These are essentially infrastructure projects, like highways or bridges, infrastructure for the internet, basically, which just aren't, don't lead to a lot of jobs. Yes, there will be some, but I do not believe that the trade-off in intensive resources is going to justify the few jobs that there will be. The other main concerns, of course, is power and noise. Water is often also a concern. I was very happy to see in the frequently asked questions that this particular company appears to be using closed-loop water cooling, where they basically use the same water over and over, and it loops and gets cooled off, so they're not draining gallons and gallons of water. However, this does add to the noise concerns, as fans have to be used to cool this water. I know that the developers said that the building's design can help cut down on the noise, however, a lot of the noise from data centers come on the top of the roof, where trees and the building itself really can't mitigate that because it's on top of the building rather than within it. This is especially true of the diesel generators that are required as backup power. So typically, I believe that a diesel generator will provide about 2 megawatts, so with a 240 megawatt, if there was a blackout or something, they needed to run all of them, they're going to need to build, I think, about 120. The developer might say that the number's slightly different. These have to be run about an hour every month to make sure that everything's operational and functional, however, they can't all be run at the same time, so when you've got hundreds of these tractor-trailer side diesel engines running on, taking turns every month, this is going to be a lot of noise. Now, if this is somewhere away from residences, this might not be a concern, you know, there's no one really around to hear it. However, there is a road directly behind where this is going to be built with houses, and they have received a variance permission to build within five feet of these houses. I realize the building itself isn't right on that border, that's going to be where the substation is located, but it's still going to be quite close. My last concern is on the power. I realize that the Sirius One has been running for about 20 years. Doesn't seem to be any issues. It seems to be going quite well. I drove by there. It doesn't seem loud. It doesn't seem a nuisance to anyone. However, I want to note that this proposed new one, technology's moved a lot in 20 years, and this is over 2,600 times more power, sorry, percent more power than used by that one, which means, you know, more noise, more lights, more issues like that. So, my, no, I'm running out of time, it took longer than I thought. My primary questions are, I see that a power agreement is pending, I know it isn't here yet, but from running calculations, the Hamilton Utility in the last year made around 800 megawatt-hours. This is going to need about 2,000 megawatt-hours annually, so really, just where is this power coming from? Are we more than doubling our generation? Are we buying from elsewhere? PMJ just had an over an 800% increase in their rates back in 2024 due to data centers, so I'm concerned if we're buying from other sources, it's also going to be expensive if we can't generate more. That's my time. I realize you might not be able to answer right now. Thank you very much for your time. I know the five minutes are up. Should I take a seat?
Well, no, you can stay right where you're at.
Okay, thank you.
First off, you know, thank you for presenting your issues to us. I will tell you this, I know everybody on council, and I definitely know city administration is taking this entire project very seriously. We're doing our homework. If you're quoting from a February, or excuse me, an August 2024 article in the Forbes magazine, I've got that one here.
Okay.
The council is doing their homework, and administration's definitely, like I said, doing their homework, so you've raised issues, and I can guarantee you, our city professionals are looking into each and every one of them, and looking into them seriously, and you know about the, what got put on the city's social media? The city manager, you want to say a few things?
Sure. We've referenced, but just for the folks at home, there is a, an FAQ, frequently asked questions, that's been posted to the city's website, just for people to answer some of the questions that you raised. Obviously, we don't have time to answer all those questions, but you do raise some great questions. We have Edwin Porter here, Director of Infrastructure. I know he's got some information that I'm sure he'd be happy to share with you to maybe answer some of the more technical questions, but just at a high level, I think people at home should know that the jobs is a part of this development in terms of the benefits here locally, but it's certainly, the benefits are much greater than just the jobs that this project's going to create. This project will create revenue for our utilities, which helps support the utility infrastructure for every citizen here, but also generate revenue for our general fund, which helps support all our public safety expenses, paving roads, et cetera. So, this project brings a lot of benefits. Noise is certainly something that we're having a discussion with the developer to make sure that we're mitigating that to the fullest extent possible, including citing this project on the 29 acres in the farthest corner of that property, farthest away possible from any residential homes, and just adjacent to a pretty significant state route and a rail line that's real close by, so there's obviously other noise there in the area. And then backup power, there's been no discussions about having that level of backup power on-site, but again, I think those are some more technical questions that some of those don't have the answers to from the developer, but some of that we may have, and Mr. Porter will be happy to share that with you here at sea.
All right, thank you. Would there be a good place for me to submit any questions in writing?
I think Mr. Porter can help you with that as well.
All right, excellent. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you, and you'll be speaking with Mr. Porter here shortly. That takes care of our audience of citizens. Okay. Now, go to the consent agenda. That includes matters, staff reports, caucus reports, informational reports, including our July 2025 financial report, July 2025 investment report. We're going to go to the committee of the whole, which will allow council to hear from our city professionals this evening. We'll be able to ask them questions, and we all learn more about some of these projects that are before us at this point in time. Off with the motion, if the regular meeting be recessed, the committee of the whole take place. So, move.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Nab, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none. That motion is carried at 6:22. We're now going to go to the caucus agenda, and the city clerk will be with that.
Yes, sir. Our first two presentations will be done by our Director of Engineering, Mr. Allen Messer.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Hamilton community. We have two applications here. These are our annual OPWC applications. This year, we're asking for loan money in the amount of $1.4 million for water main replacements on Hazel Ross and South McKinley. This is a zero-interest loan, which is extremely helpful for financing for water main replacement projects. These mains are roughly 100 years old. Some of them are as small as four inches in diameter. Today, we typically don't put in anything less than eight-inch diameter. Because of that, there's low pressure throughout this area. They're all cast iron, and we're combining this with our paving. We're using the paving essentially as a match paving that we otherwise would be doing, and we're frequently looking for areas where we can do both projects kind of simultaneously. The pavement storm, pavement curb and storm would be kind of our normal replacement that we do with other resurfacing, and this is the area. It's a pretty long stretch there. Are there any questions on this loan application?
You can go back to that prior slide for a second.
Yes.
Zero percent interest loan, correct?
Correct.
That's great.
For 30 years.
That's why I just wanted to check on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one, this, too, is an annual ask that we do for OPWC. This is an actual grant. This money could go towards water. It has at times in the past, but paving's one of our greatest needs, and so we're applying it this year to resurface. It'll take care of the curb, the storm sewer as well. Good news, it's 300,000 more than OPWC had available for us last year. This really is part of our budgeting for our annual, we're basically given an allotment based on population, so that's why it's a certain amount. That's how we arrive at that, but we still have to go through the application process. It has to be eligible work. It gets scored in a sense, and we have to demonstrate the value of this grant funding. We've got quite a few streets on here. These, this, just to be clear, is our OPW street, OPWC eligible streets. We'll have a much larger list coming out as we finish the budget process later this fall. We're hitting the HEP area, some areas in the north, and Park, Serial, Pretania, Milliken. I'll flip over to, you can see a pretty even split between west side and east side, and again, this is just OPWC. These streets will be your traditional mill and fill from curb to curb. We are, as part of our paving this year, looking to do some other methods, such as more Cape Seal that we've had success with in the past, to stretch those paving dollars further, but that type of work is not as applicable to the OPWC, and that's why we pick certain streets that are OPWC and certain ones that are not. Good news on the grant front, it's not official yet, but yesterday, we scored well enough to receive funding for all three of our OKI grant applications. That was Park Avenue, which we actually scored second out of all of the resurfacing trail connection between Markham Park Rivers Edge and Black Street Bridge and the west roundabout of the North Haven Crossing, River Crossing. That was actually, the TID's name is the applicant, but certainly a project that we have pursued. With that, are there any questions on this?
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Nab, Ellen, when on the slide, it talked about effective July 1, I believe. Is that correct?
Correct.
Does that mean that those streets could be, would be paved next summer?
It's really unlikely that all of the work would be done, the concrete work and the storm work in advance. Probably looking at 27 actual paving, but construction's starting next year.
Gotcha. Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Congratulations, and thank you for all this great grant work. It shows that we can do the grants the right way, handle the money the right way, or so it benefits all of us. Thank you.
You've got a great team.
Yes, definitely.
Thanks, Ellen. And our last presentation during the committee of the whole will be by our Chief of Staff, Ms. Mallory Greenham.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I am here tonight to talk about a new ordinance that's coming before you about the city accepting sponsorships for some of our special events. We currently do not have a policy that allows us to accept any donations for anything. Really, the why is when in 2015, when we entered into a management agreement for Hamilton Parks Conservancy, all of our parks and rec kind of went with them and all of our policies surrounding it. So, this ordinance, which went through ordinance review and was passed in March, would just establish our guidelines to solicit, accept, and recognize said sponsors. There'll be several departments that'll use it, city manager's office, very heavily in the economic development department around events that might happen downtown, even our health department, Department of Neighborhoods. Some key takeaways from the agreement that's before you is that every sponsor that we enter will have a formal agreement that they're signed. We do have the higher level of dollars that we bring in. It may even require a council, like we wouldn't be accepting a $50,000 donation without that coming before you, but like a couple hundred dollars, I think it's under 1,000, we'd be able to kind of do a sponsorship packet for that. Sponsors must agree that everything they say is government speech, and we have quite a few protections about things that are political, profane, illegal, or anything that may adversely impact the image of the city of Hamilton. Where you're likely going to see this, the most applicable application of it would be our Holly Jolly Hamilton series of events, mostly like a logo sponsor for the printing of our rack cards, would probably be a very reasonable sponsorship offering. Any questions? That's our finance director, Dave Jones, at one of our special events.
I got to say, this is like a really a fun city, isn't it?
It is, yes.
All those photos, I mean, that is just like, a fun place. Questions, comments? Thank you.
And that concludes our presentations.
Thank you. Off with the motion, that committee of the whole be closed.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:31. Off with the motion, if the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call, vote on that motion, please.
Mueller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
And that is 6:31 as well. Off with the motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Motion that with the exception of the items so noted, council receive the reports of the consent agenda and concur on the recommendation. Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Nab. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:32. Now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items and accept the motion.
Mayor.
Councilmember NAB.
I move that it be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to it being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Councilmember NAB, second by Councilmember Lauer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:32. Now go to our public hearing. Obset the motion, it's regular meeting be recessed, and the following public hearing take place.
A moved.
Second. Motion to Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:33. Public hearing, read it to the record, please.
A public hearing regarding approving a major planned development departure amendment and specific use request for the Dorana Hybrid expansion and rezoning of specific properties of the proposed Dorana Hybrid expansion to IPD Industrial Plan Development.
Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving the, the requests for Dorana Hybrid expansion? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving approval of various matters for Dorana Hybrid expansion? Anyone in council wish to be heard with a big motion at this time? Mayor. Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion to Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember NAB. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:34. Obset the motion at the regular meeting be reconvened.
A moved.
Second. Motion to Councilmember NAB, second by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
NAB?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, six zero.
We now go to pending legislation, agenda item number five, which is a second reading of an emergency ordinance involving our burial permit fees.
An emergency ordinance amending the subparagraph H of section 1733.01, fees and charges of the codified ordinances of the city of Hamilton, Ohio, relative to the burial permit fee as updated by House Bill 96 to be effective September 30 of 2025 through November 30 of 2025, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion to Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Ryan. Comments or discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lauer.
As we continue to fight through some of the taxes and stuff, this gives a whole new meaning to nothing is certain except death and taxes.
Yep.
Our citizens are being taxed out of control. And I have heard our commissioners speaking about this. I've heard other elected officials speaking about this, but I think it's important that our local elected officials speak out on this. And, you know, I know that there's nothing that can be done at this time, but I do think it's important that we continue to review property tax and other taxes. I know this one has to go through, but I think it's important that our citizens know that there are some of us who are fighting just to have our voices heard. So I want, I would hope that we would, that our local, other local politicians would continue to fight this fight with some of this taxation that is getting out of control and hurting our working class citizens.
This is a significant increase in fees, and there's an increase in doing business. I get that. But in this situation, I think it's all going up Columbus, or a vast majority.
But I think it's important that our local.
Oh, I agree with you.
Officials speak out on this.
Because we sometimes do face, and I know over the 20 years I've been around here, indigent burials do cost money. And I just hope that we can make a request to this, I'm not sure if it's a special burial trust fund or whatever, that if we need monies, it'll come back down here if there's a need for an indigent burial. And sometimes I think that money does run out. So I agree with you. That's a lot of our money going up there, and it's quite a high percentage increase too. Other comments or questions? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
NAB?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, six zero.
We go to agenda item number six, which is the second reading of an ordinance also involving these burial permit fees.
An ordinance amending exhibit number one of ordinance number OR 2025-7-33, adopted July 9, 2025, relative to section 1733.01, fees and charges of the codified ordinances of the city of Hamilton, Ohio, to reflect the updated burial permit fee as mandated by House Bill 96, with the amended fee scheduled to take effect December 1, 2025, a second reading.
Mayor.
Councilmember NAB.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion to Councilmember NAB, second by Councilmember Ryan. Discussion or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
NAB?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, six zero.
We go to agenda item number seven, second reading of an ordinance establishing classification of Assistant Human Resources Director.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the city's classification and compensation plan as set forth in emergency ordinance number EOR 24-12-117, adopted on December 13, 2024, as amended from time to time by establishing the classification of Assistant Human Resources Director, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion to Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Lauer. Comment, questions on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
NAB?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, six zero.
Agenda item number eight is second reading of an ordinance involving a major amendment, amendment to Plan Hamilton involving the Innovation District Master Plan.
An ordinance approving a major amendment to Plan Hamilton, the city's comprehensive plan, adding the Innovation District Master Plan to the plan, city of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion to Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Vaughn. Discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
NAB?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, six zero.
We go to new legislation, agenda item number nine, first reading of an ordinance that involves a Dorana Hybrid expansion.
An ordinance approving a major planned development departure amendment and specific use request for the Dorana Hybrid expansion located at 1093 Bell Avenue and rezoning of specific properties of the proposed Dorana Hybrid expansion to IPD Industrial Plan Development. Dave Osterday, AIA, and CARB of MA Design for Dorana Hybrid applicant, first reading.
Thank you. Audience and city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to announce once again that our last Barbecuing for a Better Hamilton event is tomorrow night, beginning of 5 p.m. at the Boys and Girls Club on Grand Boulevard. It's going to be a great night, exciting night with some music and a lot of things to do there at the Boys and Girls Club. Really looking forward to closing out the season with this event. Thank you.
All right, city council, say a couple things. I believe this Saturday is a bike rally that the Markham Park area starts. Casual pines involved with that. It does benefit from social service agencies. Like last year, it benefited Boys and Girls Club, and a lot of youngsters got bikes from the event. And the Saturday after that, not this Saturday, but the following Saturday is Horn Stand Jam, and that's an awareness event, great event to just learn more and support mental health awareness education. Other members of council, I think you mentioned this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I want to just talk about what a good time it was at Baden High School this weekend, opening up the new stadium. Has a lot of meaning to myself. I think it has a lot of meaning to many other members in, in our community. What a great night, and what a way to get on a stadium opening, especially Terry Malone Stadium, or Terry Malone Field, a Tandy's sports facility. What a great night, and it was great to come out of there with a big tree for the Rams. It was a good game.
And there was some, everybody was a celebrity there, it seemed like, you know? Lauer was there, he's a celebrity. Nettie George was also there.
Yeah.
And a friend of mine's granddaughter saw him and said, she said to him, "OH." And he came back with "IO," and then he said to her, "Go Bucks," and to a child about this tall. It was a really neat, I mean, I didn't see it, but I'd heard so much about it.
He was coming up to the.
I thought you were there.
I was, yeah, he was, he stood right in front of us, talking to a bunch of people and talking to the kids and stuff. He did a great job. It was awesome. Really, really good stadium.
Mr. Mayor. Please.
Friday is, almost like, mentioned Inspiration Studios, they have their golf outing this Friday. Unfortunately, I'm out. So Mayor's going to have a team there, so hope you do good for us, because I usually play every year for you. But then the following week, we have the Friendly Sons of St. Patrick. I'm sorry, I give you.
Do you know how that sounded?
It does sound bad, but you know, it's all right.
It's like you put me through the putt putt area, and you just play golf. That's okay, I'm sorry.
Try to play next weekend, the Friendly Sons of St. Patrick's golf outing again, so two good benefits there, especially Inspiration Studio is one near and dear to my heart. And I, you know, love the place, and my sons are artists there, so it's a really great fundraiser for them. So if you can, I think you might be able to get into it, so if you can contact them, look them up on Facebook. A lot of good donors here. And the event the next week is going to be very nice for the Friendly Sons of St. Patrick too, so, and I will be there with the mayor somehow or another. I'm going to have this brace off, so at least putt. Maybe help out a little bit this time.
Thanks for your kind words about Inspiration Studio, because one of the neatest things that I've ever seen pop up in our city, in our downtown, was that studio. I mean, it, first of all, it's neat to see the creations that they make and they get, they benefit from those creations, and it's a, and you start talking to the artists, seeing their work, and it is just really cool, and the fact that they're in our downtown, a real plus to Hamilton.
And they bring out something you never knew you had in your child. That was one of the biggest things. I never knew my son had any artistic talent, and he does very well with that, so I'm, I'm very supportive of him, and they give him a lot of fun in his life, so it's good. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to kind of write on Eric's comments about the two qualifying thing. I was wondering if I couldn't lend you any wood polish for those chefs on your clubs.
That's agreed, that's agreed. Don't call them both.
I call them both. Okay, we hope your golf will last week.
My golf clubs are somewhere between Caddyshack and Happy Gilmore.
I was going to say like.
Part is closer, but 1918 than it is 2018.
I was going to say early Ireland to maybe World War II. So it's all right.
You done?
Yeah, we're done.
Oh, is there anything else?
I'd like to thank city manager, congratulate you on the Build Back That Block. Yeah, that was awesome. Project. I'm so excited about revitalizing our older neighborhoods that, that need some care for, and appreciate it.
Yeah, definitely. Team effort. Thank you, town. All right, executive session. There is Mr. Mayor for two reasons. To consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employer official, and to prepare for, conduct, or review negotiations with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. Okay. Is your motion to council go to executive session for those stated purposes given by the city manager?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to Councilmember NAB, second by Councilmember Vaughn. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
NAB?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, six zero.
And 6:46, we're going to executive session. We'll come out of executive session only to close up that regular meeting. So thanks for being here, everybody.